Good morning. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees Executive Committee meeting to order this day, April 20 at 11:00 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, the board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on board docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calbright.org, under people, under Board of Trustees. For attendees who wish to make a public comment, please use the Q and A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
President.
Amy Costa.
Here.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Jolena Grande.
Here.
Pam Haynes.
Here.
Jennifer Perry. And Bill Rawlings.
Present.
We have a quorum. President Haynes.
Thank you. I want to make note that our pledge of allegiance is in our board docs, and I would like to have a volunteer to lead us. Jolena, you have your hand up, please. Thank you.
If everyone would like to join me by placing your right hand over your heart and follow after me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to talk about the order of the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to change any of the order for any particular reason? I'm talking about trustees now. I don't see any, any hands raised relative to that. So it's my opportunity as the president of the Board of Trustees to give a report. Mine is going to be very short. And it really is going to be focused in on, very quickly, but very importantly, on those staff and those employees who are working on behalf of Calbright and those stakeholders and allies who are out there, who are singing our praises relative to what Calbright has to offer across this state. This is not an easy job, not for any, not for any employees here and workers, staff, faculty, classified, to do this job. And I just want to commend you on doing your very best. I believe that what you have, what you are offering is really foundational relative to Calbright and its mission and its values and its focus on those that we are serving, and that's the adult learners and students across this state. This, this college is critically important, not just because it's across the state, but because it's trying new innovative ideas and processes to make not only Calbright better, but to make the system better. You are part of, and I don't even want to use the word experiment, because I think it is more than that. You are part of a movement that really speaks to where we need to go, not only in the state of California. California, in many cases, is right up there in terms of innovation. And education needs to be part of that innovation. Career education, academic education has to be part of that, that innovation. And, and we get to talk about that in a way that there are lots of people listening. And so I just want to commend you because I know that you are burning the candle at both ends. I want you to know that this Board of Trustees and the Board of Governors, both, while they're the same individuals, we recognize, we recognize the part that Calbright plays and want to thank you for all of the work in all of the late nights and all of the challenges that you come in every day, rolling up your sleeves and helping and wanting to resolve. So with that, I want to go to our CEO report. President Minion.
Thank you so much, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees Executive Committee. And a particular thanks for, for all the support. I know it means a lot to hear that for everyone who, you know, comes to our institution as well as those who are in the thick of it, day to day. So appreciative for your continued support, and it means a lot. For those of you who celebrate, I hope you had a happy Easter or Passover and were able to gather with loved ones this past weekend. At Calbright, we are, as Pam mentioned, moving full speed ahead with improvements and updates to our current programs that are scheduled to launch at the end of the month and additional program development that's in the pipeline. I am also very delighted to welcome Anya Elder as the newly elected president of Calbright's local CFA chapter, and would also like to welcome Denise Tamal as she brings her leadership of, begins her leadership of Calbright's Faculty Association. And a special thanks to Ashley Odell, the outgoing CFA president, for her wisdom, her vision, and really her continued support of this institution as she hands the baton over to Denise. I look forward to continued partnership as we move forward to build the college and create and implement all of its systems and structures. Later today, Michael Younger, who's our VP of Workforce Strategy and Innovation, will lead us in a discussion about Calbright's research and market analysis for the development of the college's data analytics program. And this is really building on the equity-centered community design framework that was central to last month's board study session. And it also reflects significant attention and detail that's required to identify needs in the labor market, a very differential approach, central to our mission of launching programs that connect directly to growing fields in the knowledge economy. It's that understanding, that preparation for just single specific tasks aren't sufficient anymore. Our students need the skills to thrive in a larger ecosystem of labor market opportunities to enter the workforce as an office clerk, but then to move up and grow quickly with their portfolio after mastering the basics of data analytics or a tangential discipline like Salesforce administration. As you know, earlier this month, I had the opportunity to testify in front of the California State Assembly Budget Subcommittee on Education. And in my remarks, I shared Calbright's exceptional progress this fiscal year. Since July 2021, we have built and continue to iterate upon the very human-powered student support that are necessary to nurture the success of our students. We've grown enrollments by 110%. We've launched our CRM program to the public, where we've seen growth in enrollments as well. And we're developing a very powerful LVM program with SCIU, United Healthcare Workers. And this is just a short list of our accomplishments. However, in the hearing, I was saddened to hear that there's still a lack of clear understanding about the community of learners that we serve, the non-traditional students that are rarely the beneficiaries of focused efforts that are rooted in research-based design. And the success of these students is a shared challenge that's yet to be solved in higher education. And we know that it is one that actually requires collaborative solutions that are responsive to the needs of those communities. Across the community college system, the completion rate for non-traditional students to earn a chancellor's office-approved certificate is less than 6%. But let me be also clear, this is not a California community college problem. This is consistent with the numbers nationwide. It's a problem for our American higher education system. And Calbright was created for this moment precisely. And the early indications of our student data suggest that we're on the right track to address all of the variables that riddle this complex equation. When we surveyed our students, 90% of our students cite our model as the reason their program is accessible to them. More than three-quarters highlighted the skills-based job training specifically as the leading reason they enrolled. And who are these students? And these are students like Kevin, who says in his own words, "Calbright has given me hope. I survived COVID, but I struggled through the pandemic financially. I had to switch gears from being a non, from being a commercial public transportation driver to wearing multiple hats as an assistant at my employer. With Calbright, I was able to transition into IT, and I, now I'm almost done with the security plus training. I longed for an opportunity like this for years, and now I finally get to take my test and advance my career." And these are also students like Brandy, who contracted COVID-19 and couldn't return to work for more than a year because of prolonged symptoms. Now back on the job, she sees how Salesforce is actually integrated into every part of her company's operations and that those who actually have that expertise in the platform have more of an opportunity to grow, to move up, to earn a living wage. This particular moment requires that kind of a yes and approach. You know, yes, I can work and receive training to help transition to a new career or move up in my current organization. Yes, I can raise a family and rescale after time away from the workforce. And yes, California traditionally, community colleges are integral to the system's state's economy and prosperity. And Calbright is a complement to the system's efforts with its unique model and service to a different population of learners. And yes, we have more work to do. And I am fiercely proud of what Calbright has accomplished in only two and a half years after opening for enrollment. I look forward to continued partnership with the board, celebrating more success in the months ahead. And again, wanted to thank President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and the board for their continued effort and support of this institution. And with that, I will turn things back over to President Haynes.
Thank you for that. Our next board item is that we're going to be moving into closed session. We have one item on the closed session agenda, which is the conference with the labor negotiator. Before we go into closed session, is there any public comment on this item?
President Haynes, there is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. So we expect to return from closed session in approximately 30 minutes. And trustees, you should have a closed session join button. So I'll see you on the other side. So, thank you. Our closed session has ended, less than 30 minutes. And the board did not take any actions in closed session. And with that, I want to move to the consent items. Sorry, the consent agenda, which has a few items within it. We will now, and this is section three of the agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion or for a separate vote? I don't see any, any hands raised to do that. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda?
President Haynes, there is no public comment on this agenda.
With that, then can I get a motion to approve and a second?
Move approval of the consent agenda. This is Member Grande.
Thank you. And a second?
A second. Rawlings.
Rawlings, seconds. Will you please call the roll?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Jolena Grande.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
And Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Okay, thank you. We are now moving into our action item, and I see that 4.1 is the Triple CT. That's the California Community Colleges Board of Trustee. I'm sorry. It is, yeah, it's the trustee board for the, the league, the Community College League of California. And the board, the league has two boards. One is a CEO board, and the other is a trustee board. Both of these boards are elected, and I'm going to speak to the candidates, if I can find my place here, the candidates who are, who are running for six open seats. So wait one second, sorry, but your president is not prepared today. You guys, I'm sorry. Can we do, can you do me a favor? Can we move to the next item so I can find my document? I apologize for not being prepared. So can we move, can I get permission to move to four point, sorry, 5.2 of the agenda?
4.2.
4.2, thank you. All questions now. Who's doing 4.2?
That would be our district auditors. I think Heather from CLA is here to give a brief presentation of the audit, and then we'll open it up to questions.
Thank you so much.
Heather?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Heather. I'm sorry for putting you on the spot.
That's okay. I'm just glad I was logged in and able to help you with your agenda. So my name is Heather McGee. I am a signing director at Clifton Larson Allen. So I am the partner overseeing the Calbright audit project. I'm here today to give you just a summary on the audit process and the results of the audit. So your three things, excuse me, three key things that are important for those with oversight and knowing how a audit is performed is, is what is the opinion of the financial statements? So the district has received an unmodified opinion, which is referred to as a clean opinion. When you look at the opinion letter, the language that you're looking for is in material respects presented fairly. So congratulations on a clean opinion. We also, another key item to point out to you is if there were any audit adjustments. So there were no audit adjustments, per se. We do have what we refer to as uncorrected misstatements. Per our professional standards, we have certain thresholds that we calculate that result in, would it change the financial statement reader's opinion if this error was excluded from the financials? So we did identify a handful of uncorrected misstatements, but management has chosen to make those adjustments. So when we, when you look at the governance letter, there is a schedule included in that letter that lists out those adjustments that were made. But that was a decision made by management. They do have the right to book those, but by professional standards, we didn't require that those adjustments would be made. So we don't refer to those as audit adjustments. Those are pretty much post-closing adjustments. Another important point to make when you're looking at an audit is if there's any findings associated with the audit. So the good news is there's no, there's no internal control findings to, to report back to, to the board. But there is the continued state compliance finding related to the 50% law. So we talked about the 50% law a little bit more detail last year and continued to talk about it with management. Calbright is still in its infancy of getting the college established. So it's going to take a number of years for the 50% law, you know, or for that calculation to come up to be in compliance. But the, the good news is there's really no repercussions at this time. The district is not under the traditional student success funding formula. So the apportionment is not adjustment. Calbright receives its funds through the state budget as an allocation. So it's on management's radar. They are monitoring it, but it will take a number of years for, for the district to come into compliance with that. In addition to the audit report, as I had referred to earlier, there is a governance letter. So the governance letter just communicates back to the board key, key information that's required by our professional standards. Pretty much it includes the statement that, reminder that there are estimates that could be included in the audit report. And it will let you know if there's any new standards that are on the horizon. So as I look into 2021, excuse me, 2122 fiscal year, there is the new lease standard. So we've already begun talking to management about their leases, and we do need to circle back with that because that, this will be the year that your financial statements will reflect that. And those that are familiar with leases, there's been the traditional operating lease, capital leases. The terminology has changed where it's pretty much treating them all the same and looking at them as a type of financing. So the standard is wanting to reflect that liability on the financials. But we'll be working with management to, to resolve that. So I just gave you the highlights. I would like to open it up if anybody has questions or if there was something in the financial statement that you saw that you would like to, for me to expand on more, I'd be happy to.
And I'm not sure if anybody was seeing my hand raised. On page 68 of the packet, where it lists salaries, academic salaries, classified salaries, there's a big chart. I'd like to know what the difference is. It says instructional salaries are $491,678, and non-instructional salaries under the category of academic salaries was one and a half million. So I was curious, what are those non-instructional salaries? And why are they so much higher than instructional salaries under the category of academic salaries?
Yeah, so I, I think that's a reflection of the college being in its infancy and getting established. So you're pretty much like a startup college at this time. So there's more administrators that are involved in the setting up process. If you look at the past three years, this is your third year getting an audit, that number of instructional salaries, or I think in your internal reporting, it's referred to as, is it learner salaries and accrue? You can feel free to, to jump in to clarify. That's been increasing as you've established your curriculum and the courses that are being offered. And I would like, if management would like to add to that response, I would encourage them to do so.
I think that, that's fine. That's exactly why, at this point in time, we have more of non-academic salaries, because we have more people that are on the person, what do we call it? As a person, Sturs employees in the district, right? One, Sturs would refer to CalSturs, which is the California retirement system. These are the academic people that we have. And now the rest of the people are all person. We are higher on the person side, and that's why we are not meeting the 50% requirement at this time.
Somebody just tell me, I mean, the non-instructional salaries under the academic salary category, what are they doing? Who are they?
I may just add here, Tom. There is the, there are the faculty and instructional folks that are, you know, part of the, the CFA group. And then there are administrators that are considered academic administrators. They are not classified. They're part of the academic service. So you may have someone who is on the teaching and learning side, someone who's overseeing your CFA folks. They are considered academic administrators. And generally speaking, that is that bigger group of salaries that you're referring to. They are not considered classified. They're still considered academic, but they are not your regular faculty numbers.
And there's a classification of a dean. Would that be?
Yeah. Your deans would, would be managed. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so I believe you were working, you're looking at the 50% law page when you're, when you're asking that question. But yes, that's, that's what.
50% law, I'm just looking at the, the chart. And, you know, there's three times as much spent on non-instructional as on instructional. And.
Tom, one thing I just want to add in terms of, you asked like what types of positions? There are so many categories of student support and services that actually condition our students' academic success that fall outside of the narrow definition established for compliance purposes of what is quote academic. So a lot of the folks that we're talking about, it's folks that provide the frontline tech support, but also folks that provide the frontline student services supports. They are not counted as, as academics, though we know for our students in particular, we would not see that matriculation academically were it not for those frontline workers.
Are there other questions? I don't see, oh.
Thank you, President Haynes. This is in reference to the printed page 10, but page 12 of the packet, under cash flows from non-capital financing activities. It indicates states revenues, non-capital and states revenues, non-capital reallocation. Are we getting revenue from more than just the state of California that would indicate the multiple for states? Or is this just the, the state revenue from the state of California?
What happened in the, and I believe it was this year's budget cycle, that $40 million was identified to be returned to the state budget. So it's on the cash flow because this, during 2021 was the fiscal year that that money actually was transferred over. But it's reflected in the 1920 financial statements as a liability to be paid out during 2021. So not, not, not two separate, not two separate type of allocations. It's just, it was from that initial year.
Thank you.
Other questions? Well, thank you. We now have public comment. Is there any public comment on this issue, on this item?
President Haynes, I see no public comment on this item.
All right, then, can I get a, a motion to approve in a second?
I can have it on the. We'll move.
Okay. Costa, I heard you. And then Agüinaldo, can I take you as a second? Great, would you call the roll?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Jolena Grande.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
And Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to go back to 4.1, which is the board elections for, for, for the Triple CT board. And I want to give you a little bit of, of background. As Calbright is a member of the league and as such, has the ability to elect from candidates who are running for a, a seat on the Triple CT board. The board itself is comprised of 21 elected members and one student representative statewide. And it's for a three-year term, and there are three, three-year terms of which someone can run consecutively. The entire trustee boards across the state have one vote that they can, that they can move, that they can elect folks to the board on. This election has to take place between March 10th and April 25th. What I would also say is, as I began, there are six open seats, and there is one incumbent that is running for a three-year, a three-year term. And if, if you wish to know which, which, which folks are leaving, I'm happy to give you that information. I want to talk a little bit about the process that, and you've, you've, you've asked me and embedded in me the, the responsibility of going through every one of the 13 candidates. And as I mentioned, the last time I did this, which was last year, I go through a very extensive process. I'm, I'm looking, I want to be very transparent of what I'm looking for. This is statewide. We have small districts and we have large districts. They are in rural areas. They're coastal. They're down the Central Valley. They're in the Imperial Empire. They are, they are far north, and they are small districts. There are multi-districts, there are single districts. And so I, I try to look to see who's running. And one of the things I try to do is to see if, if they're relatively new, and some of our, some of these that I'm going to recommend are relatively new to the board, but they're not necessarily new to advocacy. They're not, they're not new to working within communities, impacted communities. Many of them are actively engaged in civic organizations. But the also, what I look at is how engaged have they been relative to the league? Do. Do they go to conferences? Have they done the trustee training? And so when I, when I give you my recommendations, I've looked at all of that. I also look at the makeup of the board. When we speak about, we are looking for equity, we're looking for a meeting students where they are. And we're looking for what California looks like and what our what our system looks like. The seventy percent of our students are students of color. The largest, the the largest student population are Latin, Latino and Latinas. We we have a large population of Asian Pacific Islanders. We have a smaller population of African Americans. But it is, but our student, our students on our campuses represent who we are working for relative and who we are advocating for here at Calbright. And so I, so I pay a lot of attention to who these folks are. And and I do do some research on the online to see, you know, did they have a difficult election, you know, who who was supporting them and who who wasn't? So with that said, I will now go to the six individuals that I recommend, and I will give a little thumbnail on each one of them. So the the first person is Jose Akala. He's been on the Riverside Community College District Board, which is in the inland inland empire for four years. The Riverside is a multi-college district. He's he is a teacher in an alternative high school. I I I have two quotes for him. He says, "Community colleges can be transformative for our most at-promised young people who may or may not be following a traditional education pathway." He also goes on to say, "Being able to communicate to our young people will be key to bringing forward the changes we need to see in our system." He's been in the past an experienced organizer with CTA. He ca- this, these are the things he cares about, ensuring educational access for all students to complete their respective career pathways. He wants to focus in on current declining enrolls and ensuring that our colleges are ready to meet the needs of returning and future students. He recognizes that housing and food insecurity disproportionately impact our students. And he wants to can to continue and advocate and be and to participate in the DEIA programs across the system. Our second candidate is the incumbent, and he is currently the president of the triple C T board. His name is Ken Brown. He has served eleven years at El Camino Community College District. This is a single college district in in urban Los Angeles County. He, his quote is, "Now more than ever, our students are counting on us to expand their opportunities and access to education." He supports non-traditional pathways, CTE, athletics, middle school, high school, community colleges, and the university pipelines. In other words, all all access points need to be open to our students to allow them the most flexibility. He has served on the DEI A subcommittee. He has earned a triple C T excellence and trustee certificate, not all due. And so I I think it's important, because it takes time and you have to, you have to, you you have to do the training. It's online now, but it it is available. He has also been a conference convention workshop presenter on multiple occasions. And and then he has also served on the Financial Aid Implementation Committee, the I E P I Change Leadership Committee. And he serves as an adjunct professor in physics at CSU Dominguez Hills. The third person that I am recommending is Inez Deluna. She has served on the Napa Valley Community College District, which is a single college in the the North Bay for one-plus years. But when I read the work that she has done, I think that she would be a wonderful addition. She's, she has extensive community service advocacy, activism, and grassroots organizing throughout California, brings a unique perspective to generate change and community involvement and buy-in. She is an immigrant. She's a single parent. She has filled many roles during her career in government. Phila- philanthropic as well as small, she's been a small business owner and a grassroots organizer. She is steeped in the political process, and she has, and she has been able to speak to immigrant communities within Napa in a language that they understand, and she can translate what community college, what community college could mean for them. She has also served since, she's not there now, but but she was the first Latina elected in two thousand and three to the Saint Helena Unified School District as a board member. So she has, she has educational experience, especially with with communities that we wish to, we we as community college folks wish to make certain that they know the benefits of community college. She has, was a founding member of Epic de Cesar Chavez, Chicano, like she's on the Chicano Latino Caucus of California. She is a Lul- a Lulac member, which is the League of United Latin American Citizens. Um, the next candidate that I am recommending is Danny Ken Kelly. He has served on the Redwood Community College District in the north, on the far north coast. Redwood is a single college district. Um, he is come, highly recommended from the member who has who has served on the Redwood Community College District. She is now stepping down after after nine years. And when I read what Danny had to say, or Mr. Kelly, he wishes to represent and speak to the rural colleges' unique perspective. He supports prioritizing funding for deferred maintenance and pensions and expanding the baccalaureate degree programs. He is supportive of workforce, career, technical education, veterans, and formerly incarcerated populations. I want to make make note that it's in many of our rural, far north areas, veterans and formerly incarcerated find their way into these communities, and they don't have a lot of access. And so that he wants to focus on on that is is an in in important aspect. He also serves on the CCLC Advisory Committee on Legis- on 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 legislation. He has been active in the American Community College Trustees, which is a national organization. He has served on the governance, governance and bylaws, public policy, advocacy, and he's been a regional coordinator on on committees there. And I want to note that he speaks, he's fluent in Spanish. The next candidate is Mary Ann Lutz. She has served two years for Cit- at Citrus Community College District, which is a single college district. It is also in the Los Angeles Basin. Her focus will be on declining enrollments in California, improving awareness and campus policies related to DEIA, increased student success and to and to close the equity gaps through guided pathways, improving student transfer rates and acceptance to UC and CSU and private college systems. And she has been a member of the Trustees Communications Committee. Uh, she has been, she's gone out and got some key endorsements. She's been endorsed by the Asian Pacific Islander Trustees and Administrators Caucus, the triple, and and by members of the, and current members on the triple C T. They include Barbara Calhoun from Compton Community College, Sue Chan from Aloney Community College District, Nan Gomez Heitzberg from Kern, Andra Hoffman from Los Angeles Community College District, and Deborah Ikeda from State Center, and Linda Wa from Pasadena Community College. I have heard her speak relative to DEIA. She is an advocate. She is vocal, and she's passionate. Um, and the final recommendation is Tamara Silver, who's been on the Pasadena Community College District Board for two years. It's a single college district also in the Los Angeles Basin. I've had an opportunity to meet, sit down, and to talk to Tamara. She is enthusiastic. That's, that's my editorializing. But I will quote from her. She is a, she sees herself and and has advocated and been a fierce advocate for students, social justice, and a fighter for the resources needed to do the work. She served on the DEI Work Group Number Three, which is Professional Development and and Mentoring Subcommittee. She has been a trustee in her, at her district around DEIA integration. It's a Steering Committee Evaluation and Accounting Committee as well. She has been an organizer for the triple C T DEI Town Hall Planning Committee, which opened up a number of opportunities to have town halls in the evening across the state to voice a a number of issues that are important, important to trustees. She also has served on the community, the the Leaks Women's Caucus Program Committee. She too has earned the Excellence in Trusteeship Certificate. And relative to the National ACCT, she, but she's a member of the Communications and Education Committee. I know that's a lot, but I am willing, I mean, I I want to hear from you relative to what your thinking is. And and so I would like to open it up for board members, questions, or comments. Come on, y'all. Where are you? Oh, Tom, I see your hand. Tom? I can't hear you. Oh, your hand is down. You don't want to ask a question, Tom? Are there any questions before we vote on on this slate of six? Somebody tell me now. Can you hear me? Okay, I'm just.
I would just say, thanks for all the research and the time you put into this, Pam.
My pleasure. And I don't see any any other comments. This isn't, this isn't, I guess I could ask for public, because that's the the appropriate thing to do. We don't ask for public comment on this, but is there any public comment?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Yes, what happened?
I I got logged out of the meeting for a second. I just want to thank you for all the hard work you did in evaluating this, and I have complete confidence in your judgment.
Thank you. I I won't let you down, Tom. Okay, then, is there any public comment on on? Yes, Ajita.
I I do have a a little bit of a question, because I understand that, you know, this leadership body is particularly important to us as an institution as we face continued litigation threat, in particular in the Capitol. And, you know, this year notably, it has appeared to me that this body, which, you know, we rely on for advocacy in Sacramento, just as the other hundred and fifteen campuses do, has not taken a position in opposition of a bill to shut down a system institution. And I just wanted to, I wanted to highlight that for this board, because this is a leadership issue from my perspective, and I'd like to consider that the the board deliberate that a little bit in relation to the decision that they're about to make.
So are there any? So let me, let me, let me, let me, let me say, I I recognize that they have not taken a position on on Calbright. But and for for the CE, for the CEOs, that that decision sometimes is political. Behind closed doors, in corners, they will say, "We support Calbright." But there are those who who don't. I would also say that well, I can't say that either. No one, I I recognize that we are, we we are confronted in the political sphere. But that's not necessarily, no, no one is, no one is, none of these candidates are asked about Calbright. And I don't know that that should actually be the litmus test, because no one is asked about any of their colleges relative to, "Why are you doing this?" So that, I mean, that's my, that's my, and I recognize there's a sensitivity to that. I do not think that we're alone. There's a whole lot of folks who are just, they're just not in their own fights relative to whatever it is that they are dealing with. And I I appreciate it. Let me also say that I did attend the joint CEO triple C T board meeting, which was, was it just last Friday? It could have been just last Friday. And I did speak to the the issue. I spent about five minutes speaking to the issue of seeking their support relative to Calbright. So they heard it loud and clear from me. But I don't know that 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 should, that that should be the that individually, that these individual members, that should be sort of the litmus test. They talk about their own campuses when they, when they talk about the work. But I'm willing to hear, oh, Bill, you have.
I absolutely, oh, sorry. I, if I could be frank, I'd just say one thing, and then I'll, you know, appreciate the discussion. And the one thing, it doesn't feel like a political decision from my perspective. It feels like one of principle and leadership. This is not about a singular institution, but it's about the willingness of the leadership of bodies advocating on behalf of every single institution in the system to be willing to stand up and do that in a holistic manner equitably for each institution. And so while different pieces of legislation may have differential or disproportionate impacts on institutions, I I'm sort of raising it in the context of a leadership question and a and a principle question.
Yeah, no, I I absolutely get that. And you you have, you are much more articulate than me, because I would point my my, when I speak about leadership, it is at the leadership of of CEO of the of the league and 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 executive staff that are not, may may not be, what's the word? Supportive of Calbright, or not really wanting to to take on that battle. So I I am with you wholeheartedly. I think that we still, we need to call them to task relative to that. So I'm not suggesting that we be backed down from that. We are paid members, and they would have a strong letter of opposition had this been any of the other colleges. I am with you on that. But I don't know if we, if we can use these six members as a litmus, this litmus test relative to that. Bill?
So I just want to say that I I do support these six nominees. I think they're they're a good mix for us to vote for. But I would say also, I'm interested in in learning how we as trustees may be getting involved a little more with triple C T in order, so that Pam is not the only voice there. I mean, I've gone to some of the trustee webinars, but I think having information about how we can get maybe a little more involved, so we can add our voices to Pam's in our advocacy for the work that we're doing here.
And I have some ideas about that. I think we need to be, we need to be present at the conferences. There's one at the end of this month. I am presenting on the role of CEO and trustee with with three others. But if we're there, we get to stand up and ask questions, and we get to say we're from Calbright. I I think that that will go a long way in terms of building a relationship. So I I think that that's a a discussion that we can have. So I, I think that, that's a, a, a discussion that we can have relative to how do we make certain that, and, and let me just say, who's not here? Ulya was at one of the conferences. It was about, I don't know what was it last? It was the last, uh, bill that, um, uh, Assembly Member, from Riverside. Why can't I think of his name?
Medina.
Medina. And basically, he basically announced that he was going to eliminate Calbright. And we went up to her, but she went up first and she basically said, hi, my name is Ulya and I'm a, I'm a student trustee, I'm a trustee at Calbright. And it, it, you know, it kind of, he was wordless. And I think that there needs to be others in the audience because there are, there are folks who, who are in that audience and we just, we, we, we need to make our presence known in any kind of ways that we possibly can. And I would love the company. Okay, so with that, I think I asked for public comment. Did we have any?
President Haynes, there is no public comment, but if you could please just reiterate the, the names of the.
Yes, I can. I certainly can. Ken Brown, Mary Ann Lutz, L-U-T-Z, Hosea Kala, Tamara Silver, Danny Kelly, and Inez De Luna.
Thank you, President Haynes.
So with that, can I get a motion to approve?
This is Member Grande. I'll move approval of the six names that you have forwarded.
I'll second.
And Rawlings, seconds. Thank you so much. Um, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Phil de Guard, Aguinaldo. Amy Costa. Amy Costa. Tom Epstein. Jolina Grande.
Hi.
Ham Haynes.
Hi.
And Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. We're going to move to, um, action item four point three, which is an addendum to the Professional Service Agreement with Sacramento Advocates. And we have Jenny Johnson presenting.
Good morning, President Haynes, Vice President Costa and Board of Trustees. Jenny Johnson, Vice President of Government Relations. I'm here to present and seek your action on item four point three. Specifically, this item seeks approval of a second addendum to the Professional Services Agreement with Sacramento Advocates to extend the term of the agreement through March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three and to increase the total value by an additional one hundred and twenty thousand. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Short and sweet. Do we have any questions from our board members? I don't see any hands raised. Any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Well, then, um, can I get a motion and a second to approve?
I moved.
Tom, that, that was you moving?
Aguinaldo, second.
Aguinaldo, seconds. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Phil de Guard, Aguinaldo. Amy Costa. Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Jolina Grande.
Hi.
Ham Haynes.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. That concludes our action items. We're now going to move to information and reports. And five point one is the Labor Market Insights Data Analysis. And we have Michael Younger, who's going to be presenting. Michael?
Thank you and good morning, Madam President, Madam Vice President and Members of the Board. I'm excited to be before you today to preview labor market information supporting our intention to develop a data analysis program. You recall during the March Board of Trustees Study Session, Calbright introduced a workforce-driven equity-centered community design framework for program research, selection and development. In alignment with that strategy and prior to moving forward with program development and pilot launch, we committed to providing the board with a preview of our research and findings to support new program selection. Therefore, today we'll review Calbright's research and development phase, which consists of a comprehensive labor market information deep dive, including a quantitative career scan and a qualitative interview. Next slide. Specifically, our roadmap today will cover research overview, highlighting our process, a comprehensive career scan, alignment with the Calbright Skills Engine, collaborative research inputs on preliminary topics as well as a key labor market insight. Next slide. Our research process starts with the end in mind. As we evaluate the opportunity to introduce new programs to our adult learner population, we focus on solving for what doesn't currently work for people in the education and employer marketplace. Our process is cyclical, starting with discovery, moving on to synthesis and then co-creation. We talk with employees to understand what made them successful at their job. We also observe their mindset and delve into other factors outside of just technical training that aided their career choices to ensure we have the best understanding of their success factors. Next slide. During discovery, we engage strategic research partners and perform in-depth informational interviews with industry subject matter experts, managers and incumbents. We leverage advisory councils to validate required skills, knowledge and experience needed to perform successfully in the role. During synthesis, we schedule follow-up interviews as needed to gain in-depth analysis of the job skills identified in the discovery phase. And during co-creation, faculty, subject matter experts and instructional designers and the curriculum committee define curriculum and wraparound services teams design services. Slide. For illustrative purposes, we've brought back a familiar slide, the Brenda Filtering Action Slide, uh, to highlight our filtering process. Thinking through the various toggles on the screen, we filter a hundred percent through the eyes of our adult learner. This is what co-creation of a college experience truly means. Their needs, their desires, their preferences. Again, this is a core tenet of equity-centered community design. Leveraging the state's employment projections database, we filter out, uh, the following. Jobs with credential and formal education requirement, jobs with median pay below thirty-two, thirty-two thousand and offering no on-the-job training, uh, jobs that are solely an apprenticeship and jobs that are only manager and supervisor. Next slide. And so these are the, the resulting occupations, right? Clerks and secretaries and assistants. And what you'll notice is that these are variations of very similar occupations and functions. They represent the very first step into the knowledge economy. They're digital, they use a computer. Uh, and in fact, digital transformation has changed the way these traditional roles have been performed. New skills are required to be successful and familiarity with technology is very important, which is why we shared during last month's board study session the importance of the Calbright Skills Engine. Next slide. So as a refresher, the first four tiers of the Calbright Skills Engine focuses on personal, academic, workplace and industry-wide technical competencies. While the fifth tier is reserved for industry sector technical competencies and will allow us to really customize for the different disciplinary focus areas or occupational clusters like data analysis, for example. We partner with Open Classrooms, a specialist in the entry-level vocational training space to perform a deep dive into those, those data analysis industry sector technical competencies in tier five of the Calbright Skills Engine. As part of our content feasibility research, uh, the following became abundantly clear. Next slide. One, learners need to be introduced to structured data, right? It's understanding how the web works and how, uh, it generates volumes of data. Also, understanding the basics of spreadsheets and how they help organize data. Two, learners need to know how to apply structured data in the workplace, right? Understanding how to retrieve data and data sets and understanding how to query and apply. Next slide. Our comprehensive labor market information deep dive includes both qualitative interviews as well as a quantitative career scan. Next slide. During our qualitative research, we spoke to industry subject matter experts, both lower-level, non-management workers as well as hiring managers and supervisors, explored their entry points, setbacks and feedback on what is required to be successful. I would also add that these individuals represent the rich diversity of California and brought to light their lived experiences throughout these interviews as well. We heard from private sector, public sector, tech industry, higher ed, state government during these interviews. And the following are the common themes. One, the on-ramp jobs into data analysis are often surprising. Successful workers in this field were willing to go in through alternative channels, through accounting, for instance, or they were willing to start at the entry level to rise through the ranks, starting with data entry and general clerical work. Public government also was highlighted during these interviews as particularly appealing due to, due to their, uh, job quality. Two, Microsoft Excel is the bridge language to data analysis, right? Uh, standardized programming languages like SQL or Structured Query Language is, is a close runner-up. Everyone started in spreadsheets in one way or another, often in data entry of some kind as data stewards or clerks. Customer service is a common theme. People who enter with a service mindset, combined with an on-the-job growth mindset, tend to do well and keep rising in their careers. Three, workers spoke about finding significance and meaning in data's relationship to truth finding. They were energized by the field's incessant self-directed learning, not demoralized by it. They got immense joy from automating processes and solving puzzles and, and taking observations to insights. Most of them figured this out by accident on the job. And fourth and final, while technical skills like Excel, Structured Query Language or SQL and quantitative reasoning are specialized skills, people working in this field are rarely classified as specialists per se. Rather, they must formulate insights, answers and visualizations using other people's business unit data. They are often called forecasters with wide and varied audiences and must communicate with each accordingly. So I'll wrap up this section of interview synthesis with a few quotes directly from our interviewees. From a hiring manager who said, when I hire people, I'm often looking for a specific subject that they, that they study. I'm not often, excuse me, I'm not often looking for a specific subject that they study, but rather their potential. Do you have a knack for understanding? Can you speak multiple languages as in speaking the language of data? And then being able to translate that into something that every stakeholder can understand because you'll be working with finance and operations and customer service and sales and you have to know how to communicate in their language, if you will. So the conversation that I have changes depending on who I'm speaking with and knowing how they work. So you do have to become somewhat of a journalist from an incumbent worker's perspective. Saying the following. In our hiring, throughout our process, definitely customer service skills are very important. Even if you work in retail, being able to, uh, work with customers and coworkers, your bosses, being able to communicate with any of them is so important because you can have all of the hard skills in the world, but without soft skills like communication, you will not be as successful. Next slide. So although we've seen improvement in statewide unemployment, eight point four percent, uh, March twenty twenty-one, down to four point nine percent March twenty twenty-two, we continue to focus on regions with both high unemployment and a high concentration of non-degreed adults. Places like Colusa in the capital region with twelve point five percent unemployment rate, places like Madera and Merced and Tulare Kings and Kern and the San Joaquin Valley Region with unemployment rates of six to eight percent. But we also focus on areas like North Central Coast Region in Monterey with seven point six percent, North State Region, right, in Plumas at eight point six percent, and also the southern border, right, and Imperial with twelve point three percent. So the need and opportunity is really all around us, right? Up and down the state where unemployment rate exceeds, uh, that of the statewide average. And there's high concentration of non-degreed adults. Next slide. We continue to examine where organizations are growing their analytics capabilities, which provides greater insight into organizational performance, thus improving business decision-making. The advanced shift to digital largely propelled by COVID nineteen has created work in areas of the economy where opportunities, new on-ramps and interchanges can be accessed by adults without degrees. For the past four years, the office clerk occupation has been on the EDD Labor Market Information List of Occupations with the most job openings in California. There's nearly eighty-eight thousand jobs for office clerks, information clerks and administrative assistants in California with median salary ranges between thirty-five and forty-six thousand and just over eighteen hundred certificates were awarded in those occupations. That's nearly a forty-nine to one job posting to certificate ratio across the state and a twenty-two to one ratio in focused regions. Plenty of opportunity. Next slide. As you can see, there are common skills across multiple entry-level occupations. Skills like data entry and administrative support are highly transferable. Also, skills not listed on this slide but noted in our career scan were communication and detail-oriented, oriented and customer service skills. Next slide. Our research indicates that entry-level data analysis skills are not only transferable from job to job, but also across industries. Employers know that workers with transferable skills have an extensive skill set they can tap into when needed. Next slide. We also have an opportunity to diversify the field of entry-level data analytics where the representation, for example, of African-Americans is only five point eight percent, falling far behind their peers of different ethnicities. We see entry-level data analysis roles as gateways into diversifying the more expanded advanced data analytics and data science fields. So by way of example, uh, this is an illustration of a real public sector career path way, starting as an entry-level office clerk and promoting to an analyst based on measurable things like experience and tenure. State service has a lot of job quality markers that are top of mind for our adult learners, right? Collective bargaining, merit system with tenure emphasis for promotional opportunities, salary, stable work hours, pension, retirement, healthcare, et cetera. And it turns out, uh, the biggest employer in the state is the state. And local and municipal governments and agencies share a lot of the same traits as well. So when it comes to the spread of the knowledge economy, state and local governments are no exception. All organizations, public and private, are riding the wave of digital transformation and social transformation together. So we look forward to leveraging our, uh, understanding of these public employment environments and other entities and systems for the benefit of our adult learners. Next slide. So as for next steps, although we've completed the research phase, we have a lot of work to do, right? We'll be spending time moving our program development activities along, building out competencies and learning objectives and assessment strategies as well as the overall learning journey. And we look forward to bringing the course outline of record to a future board meeting for your review and approval. And with that, I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Do we have questions from? Yes, I see, Jolina, you have your hand raised.
Thank you, President Haynes, and thank you, Michael, for the presentation. It provides us with a context for how Calbright is identifying potential opportunities to offer to our students. I just have one question though, and it's more in line with the information that was presented about what is being screened out when you're considering, uh, potential pathways. And I was just wondering, is there a screening criteria for? And I was just wondering, is there a screening criteria for occupations or educational skill sets that are better suited to competency-based education and therefore screening out those particular programs or pathways that aren't necessarily well-designed under CBE, but rather focus our efforts on those that are better aligned with competency-based education programming?
It's a good question, and a part of our kind of scan, both research and building our structures, are making sure that we're aligning our programs to opportunities for our adult learners that will allow them to both quickly transition and skill up to be successful on day one. So to your great point, one of the reasons why data analytics and data analysis was so advantageous for us, because there is a clear path of what those skills that are required that can quickly transition you for an opportunity in the knowledge economy, in the workforce, and being able to have a full portfolio of both soft and hard technical skills that are required to be successful in the job. And so it is a program-by-program specificity, and when we talk about structuring a program, it's really with the mindset of, you know, how does this establish and centralize equity to ensure that, you know, everyone has customized opportunities to be successful? Not every program, not every discipline, not every domain, as you absolutely know, would be advantageous, you know, initially, but after vetting and being able to, you know, structure and break down what are the core skills that are required, we will continue to deep dive and expand that portfolio of programs.
One important, like, dimension of this analysis in this screen, and I think this is important to the point, and also the framing and how folks typically look at programs, we look at them often disciplinary-specific, industry-specific, in a very narrow vertical. And I think the point of our scan in terms of when we think about evaluating the context of the opportunity for the individual, the place that they currently hold in the labor market, and where we are trying to get them to in terms of an expanded set of opportunities, those don't have the academic frameworks typically that exist in traditional education in the way that our whole system is constructed, right? That narrow disciplinary focus, and especially when you get to career and technical education, it's a very vertical thing. It's not, it is not actually horizontal. And so when you actually look at data analytics, you're also looking at adjacencies in terms of skills and opportunities and the way that those programs then collectively can hang together. And so when we think about that entire universe of, and what kind of why we introduced the study session with the board in the context of this idea of there's all these opportunities in the knowledge economy job, many have overlapping skills from the program array that we hope to be able to offer to our students for the reason that that continuously gives them different type of ascension and range of motion within the hiring market itself for a whole range of these types of knowledge economy jobs. So we always think about these things as linear, and we often think about these things as vertical, and the opportunity here is to look at what that cross-section of programs are that allow us to build a rational portfolio of programs that hang together well for folks' entry points and career advancement. And so I, it's not, it's not a, it's not a simple task or approach in terms of the typical design that we see in career and technical education. It is, it is more cross-cutting because that is the way that people are experiencing the labor market, but also the way the labor market is changing around us. And so the other litmus test for this is we have to be able to have a testable set of assumptions with, in terms of the behavior of the hiring market itself, right? We don't control the US political economy. We can't control the way that a lot of those decisions get made. So very opportunistically, when we talk about the kinds of strategic partners that we engage or the experts that we engage, it has a lot to do with being able to supply us with both the contextual information, but also the relationships that might be necessary for us to do that. The reason we're focused on public sector employment, both because the sheer volume and differential between job openings available and a variety of these different types of opportunities, is also because we can see a way of working with those entities as a point of destination in ways that would be harder for us to figure out the value on in terms of the full open, you know, the full open labor market. So it's not to preclude, for example, private sector employment opportunities, but to establish the proof of concept in the hiring market where we control the most variables or where we can see or have visibility into the greatest number of variables. So it's all about reverse engineering from that set of outcomes, and that outcome is often an entry point at this point, not a singular terminal destination for somebody as we often treat a lot of these academic programs that we typically see.
That leads me to a follow-up question, and forgive me if I've forgotten, but with CalBright being statewide and our strong workforce initiatives being regionalized, do we align what we believe CalBright might be best able to offer with the priority in emerging sectors and the occupations that the regional consortia have indicated are particularly valuable in areas, especially those areas that we already know we're enrolling larger numbers of students? And then the second part of the question is, once we have identified a particular occupation or set of skills, do we then turn this over to a faculty champion who is going to work it up and take it through the curriculum development process?
Absolutely. It's, both are really good questions, and so we work very closely with the regional consortions. And so I think that's a part of, you know, the scan as well, when we talk about, you know, what is the industry? What is the labor market? What are they saying? And that's kind of an exploration as well. And to your second part of the question, you know, absolutely. So we engage with an advisory council for our programs, and in the event that both advisory, which is representative of, you know, industry, experts and SNEES recommend enhancements, right, to programming, that will then be taken back, and for both faculty, learning and instruction leadership to further vet, to say, hey, how do we enhance our programming moving forward to best be aligned with industry as well? So that would also be a part of the calculation.
I want an important point of emphasis, though. You know, a lot of times, you described a very conventional process that exists on campuses. We have a single entrepreneurial champion amongst the faculty, and that's how programs get created, and those don't have, those who don't have that, those programs never get created. And I do think it is important as a point of emphasis to say, particularly as we're building and understanding how we grow our faculty core, you know, that our faculty are absolutely central to the curriculum development process. Through the curriculum committee, we do all of things from a compliance perspective that are required, but we have to do more. There have to be more inputs into that process, and that was part of the conversation last month as well, because we don't have a data analytics full-time faculty professional doing that. And in fact, a lot of the way that we are seeing skills expanded in this side of the labor market economy, in knowledge economy jobs, requires an understanding of what's on the cutting edge of what's happening in industry in different ways. So there has to be interplay between the core function that we're trying to develop in terms of the high-quality teaching and learning and engagement side of things, right? What are those experiences on the learning and instruction side that actually help our students progress through complex materials, while the source of that data and information has to be varied, and many people have to contribute to that? Particularly, again, because unlike other institutions, we are held to the labor market outcome. We are under extraordinary pressures, both by this board, but more broadly, our founding legislation and mission is rooted in this reality. We have to deliver a labor market outcome, and no other institution has to. We are on the hook for that. And so it requires us to really, really be thoughtful and to be inclusive and collaborative with those ins and outs that condition that outcome.
Thank you so much, Ajita, for continuing to remind me that this is the way that it happens historically in 115 instances, and in order for CalBright to set itself apart to show how different and unique it is, it needs to do things in a different fashion. However, I just would like us to continue to involve faculty at the very earliest of steps and harvest their best ideas in terms of what they see and what they're hearing from the front lines, especially because they have, you know, direct learner access. They might be finding that a population of students with a particular background are all enrolling in a select course of instruction that might generate additional enrollments if we were to add a second level, almost scaffolding of certificates. So I continue to see this evolve, and it makes me very proud to know that we are doing things differently.
No, we're excited about that, and I should say, you highlighted some ways faculty can contribute, but some of the ways our faculty do contribute is around that frontline knowledge in particular, right? And the evolution of the CRM program is a good example in that, in that regard, because it was identified to us, because we don't always know who's going to come into our institution and a program, right, as an open access institution. So once we get a foundational of understanding of the general composition of folks coming into us, especially through strategic enrollment relationships, we could see that there was going to be the need for tutoring support, there was going to be the need for certain aspects of things. And so it's also not like our instructional faculty in a corner box solving all the problems, you know? They get to highlight that for the student success side of things. We get our faculty counselors, like, it's a very team-oriented activity, and it, and it has to be. And I think, you know, there is a lot to write and share about the value of working in that manner with folks who are struggling with this in the rest of the system, often like, there's no visibility for the counselors on what happens on the instructional side in a lot of instances that we see in traditional education. And so the more that we establish those things at the foundational level, I think the better and the more rapid progression we'll see on our progress. I jokingly say, like, the growth mindset is not just something that we aspire to for our students, it's something that we each individually aspire to within our institution and across the institution. It's a core value in that regard.
So, thank you. Are there any other board member questions or comments? I don't see any hands raised. I have two questions, and they're, and they're not related. I was, I was interested in the map that was outlined in the presentation. As a matter of fact, I pulled it, and there's a couple of things that I'm interested in trying to find out. One, what counties are embedded with each of those identifiers that hasn't been, that isn't noted? And I'd like to see two things. I'd like to see an overlay of, the state is big, and we never seem, and we have regions, and we have multiple regions for multiple things, and there's no rhyme and reason to them, but I would like to see, I know that the Board of Governors approved workforce and are getting, you know, millions of dollars relative to workforce, and they identified new regional identifiers. So I would like, I would like to see that overlay with regard to CalBright, not that it's related.
I'm happy to do that. I will just say one thing, which is, we don't want to supplant anything that the regionals do. And so, you know, we see an opportunity to share where we're, where we're building, but we're also not hanging out in the education silo. And this is, this feels very, very important to us. So when we think about the sort of statewide pieces of this and which regions we show up in and how, that's dictated by the regional engagement.
Absolutely, absolutely. But I'd like to, I'd like to see that overlay nonetheless, just to get an idea. And then the other that I would like to see is what community college districts are in those overlays, just so that I have an, I have an idea, and I, relative to that, one, I can't identify the counties relative to this map, but I just would, I would just like to see that overlay, overlay just for my educational benefit, if nothing else.
We are actually developing that map because, you know, it also helps our collaborative work with other institutions in the system, and, you know, in many of these programs, because we're taking such a holistic approach based on regional need and how that's being defined for us through our regional engagement conversations, there's a role for everybody to play because the gap is so great.
Absolutely.
In terms of, not just programmatically what's happening, but in overall, what the growth strategies are for, for different regions. So it will look different in different regions, and it's because of the fact that those who set the table in those regions are variable and different, and that the particular contexts are different as well. So I think, you know, there's a, happy to share any kind of mapping we do on that front, but also because there won't be a singular and common way of engagement, it will be obviously contextually specific. So I think that's, I look forward to sharing more about kind of those regional conversations as well. The other piece of it is, like, when we think about programs like the LVN program and other things, we're looking at the throughput problem. That's a system-wide problem, right? Not because we need to have ownership stake in every LVN and up and down the state, but rather, like, what can we do that solves the margin on some of the challenges in the throughput in LVNs around clinical placements, other things, vis-à-vis our partnership with FCIUHW. So many of the things that we do now and can figure out how to do effectively are for shared purpose, and there's, there's plenty of opportunity for, for collaboration, and more importantly, for the benefit to be reaped by, by other institutions at the local level.
Thank you for that. The other question I have, credit for prior learning, and I know that it's, in many cases, that's on the, on the traditional side, and I think some of the colleges and districts are beginning to do that, and it's, it's really important, but I'm wondering how that, how that would play within the design of CalBright in terms of competency-based? Would it play, or?
It absolutely has to, and it does both by statutory, it's written into the statute. It's a, it's a requirement and expectation in the framework of the compliance recommendations presented by the state auditor, which we also agreed with. But most importantly, it is the currency that our students need to hold in any of their academic progression going forward. So because of the stage of development that we are as an institution, we are pre-accreditation, right? We're going through that process right now. Our policies that are setting the conditions for award of credit and the assessment of prior learning and all of those things will follow concurrently with the development stage that we reach once we have accreditation secured, but it would be our expectation that what we set up as an institution has the ability to move with the student. That's the, that's the value of it, that the larger trend in innovation in higher education is about capturing learning and knowledge wherever it occurs for an individual and unburdening them with the institutional politics of how that credit is awarded and not, but purely on the basis of their demonstrated mastery of those skills. And that's, those institutions that serve adult learners understand the critical importance of these sets of provisions and how it is about creating greater permissions for our students to be able to have their knowledge and skills validated, those that are achieved in residence at the institution, but also those that they come to us with, because these are not, as we know, these are not 18-year-olds who are a vessel to be filled. And so we will be needing to think more thoroughly about that. It's also why I'm particularly excited about the work of our new vice president of learning and instruction, who has proficiency in competency-based education, in online education, in asynchronous education, because I think there will be a lot of leadership support also to figuring out those very challenging questions.
So I'm very interested in this aspect, and so maybe there is an opportunity to have some type of, at some point where it's appropriate to have some, some discussion, because first, I'm visual, and I'm having a difficult time trying to figure out sort of how that systematically, operationally, on behalf of the adult learner, sort of how that works. And so I'm not sure if my colleagues are interested in this area, but I am, and hopefully we can, we can learn a little bit more about, about those things. I see a, I see, Tom, you have your hand up, and then I see Michael has his hand up as well.
Thanks. Yeah, this conversation just prompted me to wonder if, since the Board of Governors passed the competency-based education regulations, I wonder if we're seeing much activity at the other community colleges on competency-based online. the other community colleges on competency based online education. Ajita, have you seen anything like that?
I think there's absolutely a growing interest. We're excited about it. You know, it is, it is very exciting to see the pilot work that the system is at the very early stages of engaging in. And we actually look forward to kind of sharing out more of what we're learning as the the group of folks are kind of assembling together from the different campuses and preparation for for that pilot work. I know that that work is kind of several years in the making. And so the we're excited to be able to to kind of contribute to that progression as well.
And, Michael, you had your hand up, but it's down now.
I just loaded so I wouldn't forget and then have my hand up all across the board, answering questions that I knew nothing about.
Okay, good enough. I don't see any of our.
But I was gonna answer, I was gonna speak to what you were talking about, credit for prior learning.
Yeah.
Since I only have a few minutes during my presentation, I figured I'd take some of your time now. So Academic Senate has been and talking about credit for prior learning, right? And when we were going over our enhancements for our program, programs that we have now, we were starting to write that in. And the way you write that in is you chunk your courses into modules that students can assess in and assess out. So on the instructional side, we give them that prior learning credit if they can pass that assessment. So you don't have to take ethics and IT if you already know about ethical situations and you could pass that exam. If you already know about the hardware structure of a motherboard, you can then move through the program. And that's what CBE is, right? It's competency based education. If you know that competency, you can move forward and accelerate your learning. So that's what we're looking at incorporating into our programs now. When we first stood the stood the college up, we had to get what programs we could and massage them to work for us. Now that we're starting to rewrite our programs, we can now write the programs in a way that works for Calbright and makes competency based education at the forefront. And to speak about what Tom said, are the other colleges starting to get on board with that? We just left the plenary session, the spring plenary session, and the other Senate presidents were coming up to us and asking specifically about that. What do you guys do? Because we really don't know what's going on. We thought that, you know, teaching online with CBE was just sticking your programs up in the cloud, and now we're doing it. And I've had at least 10 of those presidents say, we fail at that. We need help. How can Calbright help us? You know, and so that's a paradigm shift that colleges are now going, it's not as easy as we thought. And one president came up and said, I think the pandemic helped you guys. And I pushed back, I said, no, I think it hurt us because now it brought all of you guys online with us. He said, no, what it showed is that we're doing it wrong, and you guys are leaps and bounds ahead of us.
Thank you for that.
President, this is Namika. I'm sorry to interrupt. I did not hear you call for public comments.
We haven't got, we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, so I just wanted to be sure.
We'll get it.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, because we have other board members. Hildy, you have your hand raised.
I do, and I just have a quick comment. I just wanted to say that the last presentation that we had that was similar to this one brought up this architect named Brenda. And I thought it was so effective in in putting some some context around the things that we're learning. So you may call it Brenda there, but when I'm thinking about this presentation, I'm thinking about two people who were on my team in particular, who started with entry level jobs, who went through very similar processes as these and and to a high class problem, pretty much left my team because they pursued bigger things. So I just and pressure testing each stage of what we were presented today, particularly with respect to the next steps for program development with what a Brenda would say. So I just thank you for putting the intentionality around it, because I think calling it out is really important. But that's what I'm going to be doing with the next steps. And as we walk through all of these next steps, really pressure tending, pressure testing with Brenda's and everybody in Brenda's same shoes. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other board comments or questions? I don't see any hands raised, so we're going to now go to public comment. Any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Thank you. I think this is a very robust presentation. Michael, you did a fabulous job, and I really appreciated the the comments and questions that were raised. This is an information item, so we're now going to move to 5.2, which is reports on contracts and purchases. And we have a core.
Thank you, President Haynes and Board of Trustees. This is a standard item that comes in front of you every month in accordance with Board Policy 616330. We are required to present that this is an information item. We have a listing of contracts and purchases for your review.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from board members relative to this item? Don't see any hands raised. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Thank you. I I do have a question before we get into the the Academic Senate reports and and that sort of thing. And it's it's either Ajita or Cindy, if you can answer, answer this question. We had, we have two board members. One was in the meeting and left. That was our vice president. And now she's back. And there was one item that she was unable to vote on. And then we have another board member, Jennifer, who has come in, but and but the action items have been voted on. Is what would be the the practice relative? They're now here. They read the agenda. Can we can can the secretary go back? Delay is on and go back and ask for their votes or not?
So typically, the votes have to be counted before the close of the item.
Item.
Is is how, yeah.
Okay.
So I think unfortunately, we're past those for for those folks.
We have, but I think in the future, I think I'll make note of that, especially if they if they wish to vote and they're coming back to the meeting. So thank you for that that clarification. With that, I will move to 6.1, which is the Calbright Academic Senate Report. We have Michael Stewart presenting.
Good afternoon, President Haynes and Vice President Costa. My name is Michael Stewart. I'm the President of the Academic Senate. And first all, if I did speak out of turn, I apologize. You know, I've been told that my whole life and career that I need to wait and be patient. Sometimes I can't. So I thought the topic was hot, needed to speak on it. But I'm here to give you a background of what Senate has been working on. And like I spoke of earlier, we've been working on program enhancements for the DAC evaluator, right? And we've taken the coursework that previously had when we stood up the college and made some significant changes to it, which would allow more student engagement, better functionality of the program to add fluidity to progression of students. We created less roadblocks so that students can take advantage of CBE and work at their own pace without having to have major engagement from us on the grading side, but switched it so that we can have more enhancements with them on like submissions, evaluations, and lab environments that we've also added to the programs. Our faculty has done a great job and worked very hard on that in amongst of still supporting the students. So I must give them kudos at the public forum for that. Like I said, we were just at the plenary back in spring. I was able to bring two other colleagues, faculty with us, the Vice President and Secretary of Academic Senate, and throw them through the gauntlet of the plenary. They were able to see actually the work that is done there and how hard that work is and how valuable that work is. And for it being my second plenary, I was able to engage a lot more and not just be the deer in the headlights. So we were more proactive at this plenary. We have actually signed up for volunteer work in the ASCC. So we are making a more involved effort to be in the ASCC. And we have also put our name in the hat to present for the next plenary. And we want to present on CBE and online instruction so that, again, we can help the other 116 community colleges not get to where we are, but to help enhance our programs. So they do see a value in us and not just an adversary. And that's the message that I was trying to get across at this last plenary. We're here to help. We don't want your students. We want to give you ours once we're done with them. Once we show that they can succeed in college, you take them and then matriculate them on to the four year institution so that can still enhance their lives even more. So we found that to be very successful. We didn't get any pushback on any of the items that we were speaking on or spoke about. So that was a good thing. Another exciting thing is Senate and the administration, Ajita in particular, thank you very much for that, has worked on creating the first Calbright Faculty Retreat with the administration, which we're going to work on shared governance, how we all work together, and how we create programs together, both in admin and in Senate side. So this will be a great team bonding experience for those of us who work in the Brady Bunch squares all day long. We will be able to put faces and at least from neck down, this is what I look like type of a type of engagement with faculty and administrative staff. And Ajita wanted to make the administrative side very specific to course development and make it so that it is a very specific engagement of a meeting and also bring in strategic planning. And I think that's very exciting for faculty to be part of that, you know, and to be even included in that, because now we we will have a voice in the development of the actual college also, as opposed to just the instructional side. So I thank you for that, Ajita. And last but not least, you know, students are still moving forward. We have the largest numbers that we've ever had in Calbright's history. And our faculty is still engaging with those students, and we're just waiting for more students, right? So that we can meet our meet our goal, hire more faculty, and get more students' jobs and change lives. And that's what we're here for. So thank you for your time, and any questions, I'm open.
So thank you, Michael. Appreciate your your report. 6.2 is the Calbright Faculty Association Report, and there is no report for this month. So now we move to public forum. And are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
President Haynes, I see no hands raised and no questions asked.
Okay, then, then I move that the meeting is now adjourned. I got to use my gavel twice.